And here's Sarah as well. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:04. And we will quickly take attendance. All right, starting with Steve Brown.
Here.
Megan Brynsey.
Here.
Brooke Jewell.
Here.
Alex Viteri.
Here.
Elaine Breslow.
Here.
And Sarah Peace. All right, and we hope that Mary Lou will be able to join us when we get going. So, as I said, we have quite a lot to get through tonight because we'll be covering nominations. We have two sets of trustee meeting minutes to approve. And we also have three sets of minutes from the open space planning committee, which I guess we should probably vote to adopt those as well. And then, of course, the bills and nominations. And then during my report, we're going to briefly go into an executive session also. So all of that, in addition to the accounting report and Megan's report, so we have a lot to get through. So we will get right to it. So why don't we start with the minutes? Did everybody have a chance to look over the minutes that were circulated?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the trustee minutes from April 4?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was that unanimous? And do I hear for the May 11 minutes?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved April 4th and May 11th. And then I think for the open space planning committee, those are committee minutes. I think we can just sort of approve those as a batch if everybody had a look. Any questions or additions? All right, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from April 8th, April 14th, and May 10th of the open space planning committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and so those three sets of minutes are approved as well. So Megan, would you like to take it away?
Sure, thank you. I will be brief. And I have the accounting report as well. Sorry, my box is in the wrong spot here. Okay, um, so this month, we have a little bit of turnover happening within the staff, which is a rare occurrence. Megan Damiano did pass along her resignation letter, which I was expecting. Her last day will be July 2nd. She's currently the youth services assistant. She moved to Brookline and she got a similar position in Wellesley. So while we're disappointed, she's leaving, I'm excited for her because the commute has been a little bit tough, of course. So we're happy for her. Also Lori Walsh, her last day will be June 22nd in the evening, her last shift, which will conclude just about 25 years of being at the library, which is extremely impressive. And so we wish her well in her retirement. And also, I'd like to welcome Alex to the board. We're so excited to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome to your first meeting. Request for reconsideration. So we talked about this last meeting. I wanted to give everybody the opportunity to look it over, and I'm hoping that we can put it to a vote, this meeting. So this form, just as a reminder, was something that folks could fill out if they felt as though we had something in the library material-wise that they felt was not appropriate for our library or for a public library. So and the template was authored by Rob, who is the director in Weymouth, and all the OCLN libraries are trying to adopt a similar form so that if we run into something, we're kind of all responding in the same way. So I was hoping we could put that to a vote.
I think it's a great idea. And we should, I move that we use it as our policy.
Anyone else?
Seems reasonable.
I agree.
We can amend it based on experience, correct?
Sure, so you know, if we move along and something pops up and you know, we use the form and we find that, you know, we can make, add it to make it better as the process goes through, we can absolutely do that.
All right, any other questions or comments on the form? All right, we have a motion to adopt the request for reconsideration form. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, why don't we do a roll call for this? Steve Brown?
Support, yes.
Sarah Peace?
Yes.
Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
Alex Viteri?
Yes.
Elaine Breslow?
Aye.
Megan Brynsey?
Yes.
And Catherine Harvey, yes. So the request for reconsideration form is adopted.
Great, thank you. Yesterday, I attended a lunch in celebration of St. Harbor's fifth and final current grant round of their department. And so we got to talk about all the successes that they've had, which was fantastic. And we were all, and I was also presented an award for being a community partner and, you know, helping with their success, which, you know, I was extremely proud and grateful to receive. And I'm looking forward to the next five years when their grant is awarded, fingers crossed, in August. But I have very high hopes for their continued grant rounds.
They need letters of support from the community to support that?
I appreciate that. I think, Steve, that they've already finished that piece.
Right.
And they've submitted. So the feedback has been from the state that Cohasset has one of the leading programs. And so I can't imagine they'll, you know, not grant another five years. So they've done really well. I just want to give everybody an idea of our reorg so that you can see faces and names. And this might be especially helpful for Alex, too. So this is the new, can you see that okay?
Yeah, good.
Is that mode? Okay. So the changes that are being made are Megan Damiano was the youth services assistant, and I've worked with Chris Senior. And we've decided to split up the technology librarian position and the youth service and the young adult librarian position. So we will be hiring somebody who just does young adult programming, and Bridget's going to take over just for technology. So we're a little, we're a little behind. We have some improvements we can make on our offerings for services in regards to technology. And I've been hesitant to implement because we haven't, you know, with technology, you always have, you know, things that aren't going to work properly, and they're not connecting. And, you know, in a perfect world, you implement a technology and it works the way it's supposed to, and off we go. And unfortunately, it's been my experience that that's not reality. So Bridget will be in charge of not only, you know, implementing for technology, but she'll be also be in charge of troubleshooting, offering more programming regarding technology and trying to bridge the digital divide. And the young adult librarian will focus solely on young adult programming and collection development. And then we'll be filling Lori Walsh's position, which was the library technician. She was 20 hours. Christine has granted us 35 hours. So we are able to hire a full-time person to take over that role. So we have some, an increase in hours for staffing, which is fantastic. And I think that we are kind of stretching out a little bit so that we can continue to, you know, implement more services through the library. Somebody have any questions on that?
So how far along are you in interviewing or beginning the interview process?
So I've not begun the interview process. The jobs just were posted yesterday. Because the young adult librarian and the tech librarian were new, I had to write a new job descriptions, and they had to be approved by the union. So that was just done this week. So we've finished up with that. And I've received a few applications, but not a bunch. Outdoor Space. As you all know, we've received 25K over the next two years from the South Shore Music Circus, which is fantastic and a huge victory. And I will be meeting with the Social Service League in July at their monthly meeting to discuss our project as well. So I've met with Christine Murphy, and she just, you know, gave me a little bit of background about, you know, what their needs are on their side and, you know, how we can kind of come up a little bit more favorably in their meeting. So I think I have a nice plan, and we have her support, which is great. So it's just meeting with her board and making sure that we're in line with their mission. I will show you the plan. I think you might have reviewed it last meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw it. So this is, I would say, the draft before the final draft. We had a few small changes, and we're still waiting for the survey from John Cavanero's team. But, so this is what we're excited about. We're hoping to have a patio outside, which you see here, with some picnic tables. The chairs here, we have room for 93 chairs, which really helps with the perspective of the space. I didn't realize how large this was until I was able to see that many chairs. And then we also have seating space along the wall here so that people can sit there as well. I love this space because it helps. Steve had presented a sun study, and that was really a focus on how to move forward. Because in the spring and the fall, we want the sun to, you know, keep us warm and make for a comfortable program. And in the summer, we don't want the sun because it makes us uncomfortable and it's too warm. So what I like about this is that the performer can be on different sides of this patio, and the audience can be on opposite sides. So depending on where the sun is and the time of day of the program, we can kind of change where everybody's seated. Also, in the final plan, we're hoping to have a pergola that goes over the top of this space, which makes it a great space for the spring and the fall. And then if you look down below in the amphitheater type area, I'm sorry, this, yeah, spring and fall, excuse me. And then the amphitheater area down here would be for, all right, I was right the first time. Up here would be for the summer because the pergola is there, which blocks the sun, excuse me. And then down here would be a great space for the spring and the fall because there's no blocking of the sun. So it'll be a nice, comfortable, hopefully, warm enough to have programs out there during those times, and the sun will help us warm up. And it provides a nice space. And then the circles you see are bushes to help with privacy and maybe a little bit sound. But I don't think that's the direct goal of the bushes there.
What happened with the idea of moving the pathway more over towards Soyer?
I think, Steve, so I think all of those, we had some like, some changes in our last meeting. And I think we're waiting for the survey to come in so that when he redoes the plan, he can use the land survey and move some of the things that we were interested in moving at the same time.
Is it appropriate for me just to suggest one thing I saw that's relevant to this now? So I was watching our granddaughter play softball, and they have this wonderful facility that has just a single aluminum pole that sticks up. It's a little curved. And it pulls up a cloth so that when you're practicing, the balls stay within the batting cage area. But you can drop it down, and it's, you just crank it up. So it's something that's very simple, very straightforward. I have a picture of it, which I will send on. But I thought that it might be a way of having an easily deployed sunshade that would work, but the staff could easily use it. Wouldn't be, you wouldn't require assistance from anybody else in town. So I'll pass it on.
That's interesting. Yeah, I'd love to see that picture.
Yeah, that sounds great. And I think that's flexible and adaptable is great.
So that was my point.
Thank you. Okay, almost done. Let's see. There's the patio space. I wanted to show, so we've been flocked. Yes, so, and I just wanted to show it off for a few laughs. It really made my day today when I pulled up and all these flamingos were in our yard. So thank you, thank you, Brooke.
Wow.
You're welcome.
I've been meaning to reach out to you for like, a week to like, make sure it was okay. And then someone on like, the flocking team was like, oh, and I did the library. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, like, I hope, you know, I'm glad that you liked it.
Oh, I loved it. I'm almost glad that I didn't hear from you because when I pulled up today.
Oh, good.
Yes. Flamingos all over our yard. So that's great.
Great.
So what do we need to do? I mean, I thought usually when, you know, back in the day when people got flocked, it was something to donate to the cause, so.
Well, I think this is a, this is a complimentary flock. Okay. But yeah, I think normally, like, for the families around town, when they get flocked, it's kind of, you know, then they can flock another family. But you're all, I think the library is good. It's all good.
I've been thinking about somebody to flock, so.
Oh, well, okay.
I'm working on it.
You have the little, there's a flyer that has all the directions.
Yeah, I saw, I went on the website. I actually hadn't heard of being flocked before, so I was like, this is interesting. Then I was like, I should probably look up to see what this actually means, even though I love it. And so, yeah, I've been plotting. Somebody will be.
Okay, all right, perfect. Keep me informed.
And so lastly, our ongoing project with the Historical Society and hoping to have a partnership where we can display some of their art came to fruition last week. And thank you to Elaine. And also thank you to Alex for being flexible about his study room space that we booted him out of for a minute.
I was, it's so cool, actually. I was like, what are we looking at here? It was the coolest thing ever. So I think it's a great addition.
Yeah.
It was cool.
Thank you, thank you. It's a nice partnership. They have a lot of interesting things over at the Historical Society that a lot of people don't get to see. So we are working on putting the labels up. We haven't quite done that yet. But I think we have about 25 pieces up in the library now. Study rooms in all different places, and it's certainly pretty cool. So that project is just about complete. And that's all for my report today.
Are you going to do the accounting report as well, or?
I just pulled it up. So the accounting report. So we are close to the end of the fiscal year. The budget is getting tight, but we are very aware of it, and we really don't have anything, any big purchases coming up. So, you know, we have a little money for things that might, very small things that might need to be dabbled, but we're in a good place. So we should be a little bit under our budgeted appropriation as long as nothing extreme happens, which is the goal. We want to be right, right there so that, you know, following year, they don't take a look at our expenditures and say, well, you know, the library doesn't spend, you know, $10,000. Let's take it away from them. Not that that, you know, is what always happens. But it could over, you know, if we don't spend what we're given, then over the next couple of years, it could be, you know, given to somebody else, and we don't want that. So we want to at least be close at the end of the year to make sure that we're still supported the following year to the same degree. We had a deposit for a total of $255.94, which was just fines and fees paid by patrons, which is more fines for lost books and not fees because we don't charge for late fees anymore. And then we had $161.59 paid for by credit card. So that check comes from OCLN. We received that. No deposit sadly into the gift account. And there was a CLT check that came in for $5,000 from Ronnie and Dave McMorris, an appreciation of Agnes McCain. She was a longtime library trustee, as some of you, I'm sure, know. CLT is depositing that check. And we'll be sending a thank you to the McMorris's. Does anybody have any questions?
When's the fiscal year end?
June 30th is our last day. So July 1st goes into FY '23.
And do I, do we, obviously, we have a budget for next year. What's that look like, or do I have access to that?
I will send you that. You do, but I, you know what, Alex, I can't tell you offhand like, what month folder it's going to be. And so why don't I, I'll send that to you. So we are in a very good place budgeting-wise. Every year, we ask for a little bit more money to support our book budget by the town. I feel that our personnel budget is supported, and I think that showed as well when we've asked for some small additions this year. So I think, you know, my only concern every year is the materials budget that we've talked about before. But, you know, it's supported by the donations from the CLT, and that's the most uncomplicated way to say that. But, you know, generally, towns support the majority of their library's material budget. And that's not really what we see here. So that's something that we're going to continue to push more.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I just, just out of curiosity more so than anything else.
Good, we like involved trustees.
All right, we lost Megan. Did we lose her?
I'm here.
Oh, you're there, okay. You went so quiet, I'm sure.
So I guess with that, then I will take a motion to vote to approve the bills for the month of May.
Second.
So moved.
All right, we'll do a quick roll call. Steve Brown?
Yes.
Alex Viteri?
Yes.
Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
Sarah Peace?
Yes.
Elaine Breslow?
Yes.
Megan Brynsey?
Yes.
And Catherine Harvey, yes. So with that, the bills are unanimously approved. All right, so I guess that brings me to my report, which is mostly the nominations. So I will turn it over to our nominations chair, Elaine Breslow.
Well, thank you. So I don't know if Megan James, if you'd like to just say a brief word about, you know, in terms of physically signing the warrants. And because there was some concern, let's say, the chairperson couldn't go, could the clerk in his or her place do that? And I think you just had a couple of things you wanted to say to that point, and then we can move on to the nominations, I think.
Sure, so regarding having more than one person on the board have the ability to sign for bills. And just for reference, Alex, when we met in person, every, all the board members who attend the meeting sign the bills. But since we've gone virtually and has moved to that the chair has to come into the library usually the next day and sign the warrant. So what we're hoping to achieve is the ability to have, you know, more than one person come in and sign for the bills. And that can be easily done. Dawn, I guess historically, Dawn has just accepted a letter from the board stating, you know, that Catherine Harvey and, you know, Carolyn Coffey, who's the clerk, are allowed to sign for the bill so that the board can really put forth anybody that they might like to be on the list. And we just have to let Dawn know who's in the head of finance. And so, and once that's done, you know, anybody who's on that list has the ability to sign. I will make a.
That gives a little bit of flexibility. I mean, that's one of the things that we, that when we talked in the last meeting, because that's time sensitive. It has to be signed and returned to the town within, I think it's by Friday at noon. Is that right?
Yes.
Or, yeah, so it's sometimes, you know, if, whatever, things happen. And so it's nice to have two people to be able to do that, to pop into the library and get that done. I mean, of course, the hope is that relatively soon, we'll be meeting in person again, and then this whole, you know, issue will go away. But for the time being, it would be good if we could, after we do the slate of nominations, if we could also have a vote to maybe delegate that task as well to the clerk, as Megan described. Does that, that all make sense?
Makes sense, yes.
Okay, all right.
So moving on to the nominations, thank everyone who got back to me, which pretty much was everybody. So thank you very much. And it is, I don't know if we, again, I have never been in charge of the nomination. So I don't know if we make, if I relay what has transpired pretty much as a popular vote. And then do we need to vote on those? Yes, I would think so. So as far as our chairperson is concerned, it was pretty unanimous to invite and hope that Catherine Harvey will accept again. So I.
I wish I will, thank you, everybody.
And I guess we should entertain a motion for that to happen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and should we have a roll call for, is that necessary?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So who wants to do the roll call?
Why don't you take it, Elaine?
All right.
I'll just recuse.
Steve Brown?
Yes, I support.
Alex?
Yes.
Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
Megan Brynsey?
Yes.
Sarah Peace?
Yes.
Catherine Harvey?
Yes.
Elaine Breslow, yes. So it is unanimous. And so Catherine Harvey, we will gladly have you serving as our chairperson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure to pitch in and help out.
Yes, I mean, it's a hard first year. And certainly, if, you know, we've had several years of one person doing it. So we are so grateful that you're willing and so ably serving. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So Carolyn is overseas, but again, by, I would say, popular vote, everyone has mentioned and would happily have her serve again, and she has gratefully accepted. And so I'm looking for a motion to have Carolyn Coffey serve as our clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do another roll call. Catherine Harvey?
Yes.
Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
Alex Viteri?
Yes.
Sarah Peace?
Yes.
Megan Brynsey?
Yes.
Elaine Breslow, yes. So by, so ruled, so moved. Yay. Carolyn Coffey will serve again as our clerk. And then I guess Catherine Harvey, if you want to make a motion or introduce the motion to have the clerk be the person that is also empowered to be able to sign the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Another roll call. Catherine?
Sure. Yeah, why not?
All right. So Catherine Harvey?
Yes.
Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
Megan Brynsey?
Yes.
Sarah Pease?
Yes.
Alex Vitari?
Yes.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Elaine Breslow, yes. And it, whatever we want to say. It passes. Yes.
Unanimously approved.
Yes.
All right. All right. Fantastic. That's great. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. That was super efficient and good. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to ask Megan to stop the recording and just check attendance to make sure that we don't have any members of the public joining us. And then we're just going to briefly step into an executive session. All right. So that brings us to the Friends Report, which is brief. Megan presented to the Friends the plans for the outdoor space that we just looked at. And the annual appeal is at about 26,860. So down a little bit, but not, not terrible really as it, as it shook out over time. They also voted on their board for the following year, which will be Beth and Barbara, Beth Tarpey and Barbara Wren staying in their roles as president and treasurer. Jen Evans taking over as corresponding secretary and Meg Wheeler stepping into the marketing role. And CLT, obviously, we don't have a report on that because Carolyn is not here. Although I know that I, I think several of you attended the, the event for Bob Riley, which unfortunately I could not attend. So I think that was the main, the main event that happened for CLT this month. And so I think that's about it unless anybody has new business or anything that they want to mention.
Did we say that Brooke has graciously agreed to be our liaison with, with Friends? Is that true? Is that a rumor?
I'm like, what? Well, I think I had brought up the idea of, is it possible to have different people attend the Friends meetings and have like a rolling? Maybe there's three people and then we change out every month. But I haven't been to a Friends meeting. So I don't know if that would be too disjointed or confusing.
I mean, it, it's, I know there's, there's a role called trustee liaison. And I think it may have been written into the new bylaws. I'm not certain about that. So let me check on that and get back to you. They will not be meeting again until September. So we don't have to make that decision right this minute. So, you know, I did say to them that, you know, it was possible that we would have somebody else stepping into the role. But that's, you know, that was how we left it. And like I said, we have all summer to sort of figure that out. So we can, we can have more conversation about it. And I can check the bylaws and find out whether that's a possibility.
Okay.
Brooke, I didn't mean to throw you under the bus. I just heard happy rumor. That's all.
No, I would like to attend. I just don't know if I can do it every month. That's why I thought it might be interesting to have different people attend the meetings. I just don't know. And then report back to our trustee meeting.
Yeah.
Even if it was like two, two or three people. But, oh, there's my daughter. Sorry.
Sorry, I just caught mine over my shoulder too, bopping around the kitchen.
I'm like literally hiding in the car in the garage.
It's a good time to wrap up the meeting. It was, it was a full one. So thank you, everybody. And thank you, Megan. And I think that, that brings us to a close. So if I, we'll hear a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned at 7:14.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye.